We are on. Happy New Year to everybody. Welcome to the Newton Board of Selectmen's meeting dated Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. Time is 6:03. If we could start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll open it up for citizens' input if anybody out there would like to discuss anything that's on the agenda for tonight, any questions or any concerns. I don't see anybody, and I haven't heard anybody. So we will move on to the public hearing for the municipal bridge. It's a special one-time grant, excuse me, that we received. Mike Povero and Trish McCossey had submitted a grant for bridge work to be done specifically for that purpose. We received it. I think, Trish, this is the first one we've received?
Yes.
And we're gonna be, there will be a warrant that we're putting out to open up a capital reserve fund so that this and then any other grant money that comes in for bridge work and whatever can be put into it so that it'll be at the ready, so that the road agent will be able to use it when he needs to work on the bridges in town. So with that being said, would anybody like to make a motion? Or actually, do we just gonna acknowledge the receipt of the one-time payment from the New Hampshire City Bridge payment in the amount of $18,479.46, which was received in December of 2023? This is the public hearing, was posted to receive this money today.
And does anybody have any issues or any, that's kinda the goal behind the public hearing?
I think I pretty much spelled that out.
Yeah.
That it's money from the state to do some work specifically for that.
This is money coming into the town that we already paid taxes to.
Right.
So if anybody has an issue with it, that's...
Yeah, them giving us, thank you, them giving us some of our money back.
Right.
All right, that being done, we're gonna move on to administrate, administration.
I think we have to take a vote, right? Vote to accept, do we?
All right, all in favor of accepting the bridge grant money?
Aye.
Aye, that would be unanimous. So that's all set, so now we will move on to administration.
The public hearing at 6:07?
Yep, very good. Now we'll move on to administration.
Right.
Did you close it?
Yep, Matt just closed it. Jim?
Yes, I would ask you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, to accept a $30 Market Basket gift card from Julian and Scott McGee. It's just an acknowledgement, we're not even, you don't have to accept it formally.
Right, goes right into the food pantry.
No.
And then we would also like to announce the resignation of Sergeant Ryan Gary, who's been serving on the Newton Police Force for some time. So I will move to accept the resignation of the Newton Police Department Sergeant Ryan, effective January 11th, 2024. Gary, with thanks and appreciation for all his hard work and his dedication to the, to the Newton Police Force.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that would be unanimous. And now we will move on to warrant articles.
You have a series of, I think, five pages. These warrant articles contain everything that's been talked about, it's nearly a matter of all of the boards having the discussion about what you actually want to see in the warrant, and anything that the board doesn't want from the warrant, restricted from this document. This is a work in progress, narrowing down from every unit there. This was the operating budget, if we haven't completed yet, to be announced.
Yes, yep, signed off.
Signed off?
Yeah. Perfect, thank you.
The next one is worth a discussion, they're all on, this one's pretty significant. It's the road reconstruction bond that we talked about a month ago, I think, asking the voters, is that me?
You're all right. Go ahead.
Asking the voters to authorize the board to enter into a municipal bond in the amount of $10 million to be spent over the period of time until it's exhausted. It's a special warrant article that will carry the funds from year to year. And, I'm trying not to. And I, I don't know if you noted, but at the bottom of the article, I also included that the board would not authorize expending more than $4 million in any given year.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. So again, this is not a yes or a no, it's more having a conversation or a discussion. This was the warrant article that the road agent had talked about, so...
Mike proposed, and we all agreed.
Yep.
That we would leave it up to the voters and put it out there and see if they wanted to do it or not.
Right. I haven't assigned any numbers to these articles, I'm simply just...
Right.
They're all in draft form. I have a couple of other sets of eyes going through it for grammar and spelling before it goes out to print and before you guys finalize it. The next one is an Engineering and Renovations Capital Reserve Fund. It's to add to the Engineering and Renovations Capital Reserve Fund that was established in 2015. It's $10,000 that we're asking for. The next time we go through this exercise, I'll have balances for you too, so you have an idea of whether or not you wanna do it. In some circumstances, you can actually, I'm not saying you do this, but you can pick and choose if you wanted to do a deposit, so to speak, every other year, so you lower the amounts on here from a dollar value and the number of warrant articles, that's not an uncommon practice.
Yep.
Next one is the Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund, established in 2006, asking to deposit $50,000. The next one is the Police Cruiser and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, looking for $25,000. This was off, and now it's back on. You guys heard from Acting Chief Kane last meeting, that, or two meetings ago, that he would really like you to continue to fund that, and so that's why that appears there. The Fire Apparatus Equipment and Refurbishing Capital Reserve is an additional $25,000, established in 2005, amended in 2011. The next warrant article is the Proposed Lease of Town Land. I unilaterally and arbitrarily put 20 years in there for the lease period.
Right.
We, we did hear that they make substantial investments to get a tower up and running. They want some kind of guarantee that they're gonna be here for a while. So if you do anything less than 20, it may not be worth their while to come in and do it. The next one is a Recreation Coordinator Position. That's a $50,000 ask, this will be a one-time ask, and if it passes, it'll be included in the recreation budget in subsequent years. And I have been totally remiss. All of these capital reserves and warrant articles that I've been talking about, with the exception of the operating budget and the road bond, no monies will be raised from taxation, they're all coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Yep.
So I'll be, I'll be including that as we speak going forward. Page three, the 275th Anniversary Revolving Fund. There was a request, and $20,000 has been asked to be put in that, and that too is coming from the unassigned fund balance. The next proposed article is the Cyclical Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund. We had spoken that we're up again in 2025 for cyclical revale, that makes everybody in town happy, as you well know. But the conversation that we had had prior to that was that if we put 20 grand aside every year into this fund, when the thousand, when the $100,000 bill comes in for the cyclical revale, we go to this fund, not to the budget.
Right.
It, it creates an artificial spike if you keep it in the budget.
Yeah, so the taxpayers aren't taking a huge hit all at once, every five years or whatever.
Correct, and this is for 50,000 because we're like, two or three years behind the ask.
Couple of years behind, right.
Yeah, so...
I think three years at this point.
Yep. The next one is the Municipal Buildings Study Capital Reserve. The ask is for $20,000, again, come from the unassigned fund balance.
Isn't this the one that we already talked about, to where we said that we already have capital reserve funds that we can draw from?
Yeah, we have the capital reserve called Town Buildings.
Yeah.
And it's got $253,000 in it.
Right, so this would be a redundant capital reserve account that we'd be opening, that we don't need.
And worse yet, if it's voted down, then we can't tap that account, there's no means no.
Exactly.
But I, I think what Bob's saying is, didn't we agree to strike this one?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
We agreed to pull the money out of the...
We're gonna start calling you Jimi Hendrix.
Yeah, right, but not have the capital reserve thing, so we're striking that.
Yep. And as you, as you well know, that particular fund, you know, the border, board is the agent to expend, so it's just a matter of putting it on the agenda, having a conversation, and making a withdrawal to the trustees. The Highway Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund is a new one, the request is for $100,000. Again, that would come from the unassigned fund balance. It's to start the purchase of town vehicles and equipment on the DPW side.
Which was strongly encouraged by our road agent, Mike Povero, that we need to start getting some of our own equipment.
Yes.
That's why we're putting this out there.
Yes, the, the next one, I'm assuming I'm gonna get a petition before Thursday, because I was told that the Lakehost Program Voter Directors was interested in doing it again this year, but I have not got the petition yet, and it needs to be a petition that we put before the voters. So there will be a tax impact, it's $3,000, but again, this will be stricken if we don't have that 25 signature petition. The next one on page four, at the top, is a Highway Department Revolving Fund, in the amount of $100,000. I don't know if that's...
I think we can just X that one out.
Yeah.
Let's X that one out.
Okay.
That's redundant, right?
Yep.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yep, compared to the one right before...
Compared to the last one where it goes into the capital one.
Yeah.
So it's fine, we'll just X that one out.
Well, I thought this was, the reason for this was to put it into the account for the Highway Department, because if that $10,000 or the $10 million bond doesn't go, this was supposed to kick in to give Michael some additional revenue to be able to use on the roads, as opposed to not having anything, especially if the budget fails, and what he was...
Well, this says to purchase vehicles and equipment, in the description. The next one down.
Yeah, okay, is the paving fund, okay.
That's the one you're thinking of, this one needs to go, because that's just redundant.
Okay.
Is the other one?
Yeah.
There you go.
The next proposed warrant article is a Bridge and Culvert Revolving Fund. We need to start segregating the monies we get from the New Hampshire DOT, from roads and bridges, not combining them in a single account. This creates an account, there's no money asked for this, it's a place where we can deposit the bridge money, so it doesn't co-mingle with the highway block grants that we get.
Right, which is what we just had the discussion on, that we accepted the money.
Yes.
We need someplace to put it.
Next one is a Highway Paving Fund. So here again, this is a $250,000 ask, there is no tax impact, it's coming from the unassigned fund balance, and I'm pretty sure that you would want this to be a capital reserve, does that sound right, or revolving?
I would say revolving, because I want them to use it.
Okay.
I want it to be used, I don't want it to sit there, you know?
And based on his backlog, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
No, you know, but as a voter, I wanna see that it's gonna be used and not go and, I'm not gonna vote for it, if, you know.
The next is a Town Clerk Tax Collector Compensation. It's to change the compensation for the clerk collector from fee-based to a salary. We're noting that there'll be no tax impact because it's almost identical in terms of monies. It's just, it, it gives the appearance of being more stable, it'll be an attractive position when MJ decides that she doesn't wanna, wanna do it anymore.
That a way of doing business.
The next one is Social Service Agencies, it's also in the operating budget, but we did hang it out on a warrant in the event the budget fails, because these are programs that help a number of residents in the community. That total is $30,363.
And this is the one, if the budget passes, then this one will become null and void.
Correct, that's at the top of the next page.
Yep, absolutely.
We received a request from the Cemetery Trustees, asking to include a warrant article that would provide for $1,200 to be divided amongst three trustees at $400 each for an annual stipend. I believe that Mr. Landry was explaining that the line for volunteers to run for elected offices is not really long, and this might be a way to stimulate some interest in people wanting to do it. And the last one, I don't even really know if we had a full-blown conversation about. Statutorily, the board is authorized to put, put an article on the warrant that creates a contingency fund. This contingency fund can't be more than 1% of the gross operating budget that you're requesting, and these funds are set aside, they cannot be withdrawn unless the board has a public hearing, but the goal behind this is to get the department heads to budget more, more realistically, knowing that there's a stopgap for them to go to, which is to come to the board and say, hey, I'm short in this line, I budgeted very close to the actual of last year, I'm gonna go over, can we tap this? So you have a public hearing, and then you vote on it, and you can use it.
Right.
And it lapses every year, so what, what doesn't get used up drops to the unassigned fund balance. This should, this should be a perennial warrant article for you guys to consider doing.
Right. A perfect example of being able to use this fund would be, say, like, the road agent, he has money in his budget, however, if we have numerous storms, his budget could become exhausted because of the plowing, paying the man the salt that he uses, so he might need a little extra money if another storm or two comes in, so we would be able to tap into this fund after having the meeting, and then give him the money towards that.
So based on discussions, I will amend the warrant to exclude the Municipal Buildings Capital Reserve request and the Highway Department Revolving Fund.
So, before you finalize that, or whatever, can you explain to me the difference between Engineering and Renovation Capital Reserve Fund and the Buildings Capital Reserve Fund? Because they sound redundant to me, so...
I, I think...
Did you just say they are?
I think it has to do with the fire department, the fire building, right?
No, it has to do with the rental, rental income we receive.
So, the engineering capital...
Could you please state your name, please?
Pardon me?
State your name.
Oh, yes, Diane Moore, and I'm a resident here.
Could you spell?
Yeah, I can, I can spell it.
I'm not making you jump through any of these hoops.
The difference is, the engineering fund is for the safety complex only, can only be used in that area. The, the building fund is for buildings throughout the town, that, that town-owned buildings, that's the difference.
Okay, so why can't I use the town buildings for the safety complex?
You could.
You could, but the whole thing was to get, that money comes from the...
Income.
Rental.
Right, rental income.
Income.
At the time, I think we needed a place to put the rental income, and that's why...
But I guess my, my thing is, is so we're just constantly dumping the rental income into this fund, which is essentially what this article says, and we're not using it for anything other than...
We've been using it over the past...
For what?
For...
We use it on garage doors, and we use it for some other stuff.
It's been used for, as Joe says, garage door replacements, fixes, anything at the safety complex.
Do we know what's in there, roughly?
It's, I think it's like $60,000 maybe, last time I looked.
I think we brought it up at one of the last...
It's in the trustees' report.
Meetings, it's like about $60,000. To kinda, to kinda get to the heart of what you're saying is, we could do a little accounting and create one fund to put it all into, but for whatever it was, and now we're going back nine years or whatever, as Joe said, we created this to capture just that rental income. We did put limited language in there, so we could only use it at Merrimack Road, but if you wanted to, you could have a warrant where you close out one and start another.
And I get that, but let's just say, I'm a new resident in town, and I see this.
Yeah.
I have no idea about the rental income, none of that, and it literally says to raise inappropriate, so it doesn't say, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to like, clean this up a little bit, but it doesn't say any of that.
That happened a couple of years ago, because we were depositing that money into that fund on a monthly basis, and the DRA, it was brought up from an audit, and the DRA said, no, you need to hold on to it in a year, and you need to vote on it to do that. That's why it's...
So, previously, warrant article, that particular warrant article did state that it was from income from rental, the rental income was coming out of that, that's, so and I would suggest you put that back into the warrant article, that this money comes from the rental that we have.
Okay.
And I think that, that would probably help you there.
Explanatory purposes.
Yes.
I think we tried to do that several years ago.
I mean, I don't know, I, yeah, if it's me, I would get rid of the whole thing and just put it in the regular fund, because it's revenue, and we'll use it any way we want, I mean...
Right, but what would happen, that's what it was specific, and like Matt says, you could close it out and deposit it in there, but you're still gonna have to have that $10,000 rental income deposited someplace.
Which is fine.
Yep.
But I wouldn't need a warrant article for it, is what I'm saying.
To deposit the rental income?
Yeah.
I think DRA, DRA said you need it.
I believe you do.
It was the direction we got.
You have to make that correction.
It's unanticipated funds, basically, so you need to put it someplace, you just, you could say, you'd still have to have the warrant article to take that, that money out and put it into the capital reserve fund.
You know, the key thing is also, we can't, we can't sign a long-term lease with them unless we put it on the warrant.
Correct.
So what we did is, you know, the statute basically says we can rent property for one year, so that's part of it as well. We're on, we're on that one year, you guys will be hopefully updating the lease in April.
Yeah, we did last year.
So it's, it's the one-year thing that creates this unanticipated fund.
But, to Dan's point, we could do that, which would be some housekeeping and bookkeeping cleanup, like what was suggested when we had that whole list of all these different accounts that the town has, and we, we were just talking about redundancy, so that we don't have to keep track of maybe so many accounts, and that everything is more centralized and coming out of the fewer accounts to handle things, and then that would lead to fewer mistakes of where money's being deposited, put into, and where it's being taken out of, and being spent.
But again, it's unanticipated funds, you're gonna still...
Still need the warrant, I get that.
Okay.
But this way here, we're redoing the amount of accounts.
You could close out the account, but you're still gonna need to, you're gonna need a warrant article to take that $10,000 rental income, put it into the capital reserve.
Which is fine.
Okay.
And then the next question on top of that is, because it's for the safety complex, it's $10,000, right? How does that get accounted in their budget?
It's not in their budget.
This goes into the, into a fund, right? So it's not part of...
Yeah.
In his back of his mind...
It's not in his budget, yeah, it's, so, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what we did was, we'd take it in, we'd put it in this account, if anybody over there, it didn't matter, police, fire, highway, whatever, just for the buildings, the approach, and not to belabor this point, we've talked to this, but our approach before was we're landlords, and we didn't make the department heads capturing their budgets, you know what I mean?
No, I didn't know if that was in the back of somebody's...
Yeah, no, no, it wasn't, yeah, yeah.
You know, if I may, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, much like we do an operating budget, the revenues are broken out the same way. We do highway block grants, we do meals and rooms that we get from the state, so that essentially is a budget, and when that money comes in, it's not unanticipated, because we knew it was coming. We may not know the exact amount, but it's not unanticipated. Unanticipated is, is Trish filing for a grant that we didn't know we were gonna get, so we didn't include it in our revenue budget, and then it comes in, okay, that's unanticipated. But anything that's anticipated, much like the rent, quite frankly, it's, it's coming in every month, we know that, it's accounted for on the revenue side of our budget.
But I think you need to talk with DRA on that, because...
I'd like to talk to DRA on it, because this sounds silly.
That's what they had told us, we had to do it this way.
Yeah, I think...
DRA had told us we had to do it this way.
I think the moral of the story is, we, we, I shouldn't say we, like, I'm the only one left, but we were, we're marching to what DRA told us to do, do this exactly. Now, Dan, as you've done before, and you may be doing it tonight, you've challenged that, and sometimes you're right, so it's worth the question to DRA, say, do we still need to do this?
I would just check with them on it, just...
Because it's a cleanup thing, right? Like you're saying, if it's too much, you start to lose people, so...
Right, so I say, we'll talk to DRA on that.
Just to make sure.
Yeah, and I get it, it's just, you can see from my point of view, that, I mean, I'm sitting here going, put this, put this one at the bottom of the list, useless, you know? We're getting it, it doesn't matter, they can vote no, we're still gonna get that $10,000 in rent, it really doesn't matter, and so that's, that's why I...
Cash the check.
Yeah.
Right, so why don't you check with that?
Yeah.
Then you'd be all set. So I do have one other thing that I heard, it was one of the ones where you're creating a revolving fund, but you're not putting any money in? Is that a correct statement? I don't know, can you do that? I mean, you can't open a bank without, a bank account without money.
Creating...
Oh, the Bridge and Culvert one.
We have the money to put into there.
But, okay, so right now, all you have, and all you're doing right now is creating an account.
Right, so that we have, we can put that money and put it into it.
So should we state in the language that the money, that the purpose is to put that money in there?
Something, or put like a dollar to open the account, because you can't open the account without money, that's all I'm saying.
We apparently already have it.
We did that before.
Yeah.
Right, Diane's saying the action of putting money into it, like, usually that's in the warrant article.
Right.
Open this account and put this money...
Well, I mean, we could put, what, how much was that grant?
Yeah, put the amount.
Just put that amount, money, said money, said money, $25,000, whatever it is, is deposited from the grant that we had received in 2023.
Yeah, that's what I think, that's I think you should do.
Makes more sense that way.
I don't disagree with you, Dan. The issue is, the transaction of the grant that we got has already taken place, and we have no way to put the money, because we can't segregate it.
I'd do the dollar thing, just to...
Mike Povero Road Agent, I'm just gonna expand on that, till you see why it got complicated. We've had a highway block grant forever, goes into the revolving fund. We just got, for the first time last year, we applied for our, I have highway bridge grant money now. When that money came in, nobody's fault, get deposited in the highway block grant account, that's a no-no. They gotta be completely separate, cannot touch accounts, so it's gonna have to be withdrawn out of that account, and then put into another account, but we have to establish that account before we can swap that money into another account. It's a housekeeping thing, that's all it is.
Yeah, and I think the housekeeping step is $1, just, just, yeah, because I, I think if you put $25,000, some people are gonna be like, oh, they want another $25,000, not understanding, although I'm sure Mike will be there right by the door as voters come in to explain to them.
Mike's gonna have a lot of explaining. Mike's gonna have a lot of explaining.
In the, in, uh.
Thank you, Diane.
I, I mentioned this this afternoon to Jim. Since we last looked at these warrant articles, the EMS warrant article dropped off somewhere and that was the one we had talked about putting it out there to the voters. Do we wanna establish our own ambulance program, as we talked about, with a budget number against it?
We don't really have a hard number.
Right, well, we're still waiting on that, so.
Yeah.
So my, my thing is, I think we should be able to get this number. It's a budget, it would be a budget number and it would be, you know, just a realistic number, but look at it this way. We signed that ambulance contract as kind of like a insurance policy, a stopgap. If we, if we don't put it on this year's warrant to go with EMS budgeted as this amount, we're gonna have to do it again next year.
Not again, the first time.
First time next year, yeah. And we, again, next year, we'd have to sign a contract with Pride Star, whoever it is, again, because the dates line up in that way. So I would like to, I still think it's doable, I'd like us to put that warrant back in and, you know, assign the actionees as to, we've talked about it, Dan, there's a lot in Plastow we could borrow from, right?
Sure.
Chief.
Good evening. What number are you looking for? I've been out of the loop, so.
Yeah, absolutely, so, basically, we're saying, what is a realistic budget, defined budget for doing ambulance service ourselves to include salaries, to include equipment, to include any changes we need to make to the building? And any other questions we don't know enough to ask?
Okay. Just saw, when I send it to the EMS coordinator. That number will include possible transports, the whole thing, okay?
He brought it all in-house.
Okay.
And then, then the other thing is.
Well, transport, that's the revenue side, that doesn't matter.
Well, that's the revenue side.
Correct.
I, I think what you're saying is, what we have to make the voters realize, and we can do this in the voter's guide, is whatever we establish for that, and I'll get my language wrong, revolving fund?
Yep.
We'll have revenue to put in there throughout the year.
Okay.
So it's, it's basically, hey, we're starting a new business, right? That's what it is. We need this much money to start a new business. And by the way, at the end of the year in the town report, you'll see how we did against this business. So when we do the proposed budget next year, we won't need as much money because we've got revenue coming in.
Okay, I'll, I'll send a message to the deputy to get those numbers for you as soon as possible.
And, and I'll throw this out there because, like I said, I'm the old veteran here, is, and I still have PTSD from all this stuff, so please excuse me when I say this. Could you just check with the building department as well to make sure there's, in case there's anything we need to do to the building? Because when we first built that building, we did not, well, I shouldn't say we didn't anticipate, we talked about it, right? And I'm looking at Mike, because he's, he still has PTSD as well. We are now gonna have a, we're now gonna have a slightly different use of that building, right?
An additional use to it, yeah.
An additional use, so if we, if we turned around and we said, you know, and I don't know who it is, you know, what is it, chief, the, the fire?
Marshal?
No, well, yeah, but the NC.
NFPA?
NFPA requires we have to do this, we have to reinforce this, we have to put, you know, whatever. We need to kind of know that upfront because that's part of our, again, we're going into business, how much investment do we have to make? I don't, the answer may be nothing, but, yeah. Mike, please.
I would say, Sam's in any of the buildings inspector. I would say it would be worth reaching out to, I know you've used SFC in the past, engineering, and reaching out to them by email or phone and meeting with them and, and just, just that, bump that question off of them.
Yeah.
To see what.
Whoever, whoever that might be, that can tell us, yeah.
The, the only thing that I would just bring up is, we've had storms, everything else, we've had members sleeping at that station, they've been sleeping in that station since 2018. I believe what you're talking about is finishing the second floor for fire, EOC, and the town of Newton. Because the town clerk has all this storage up there, the EOC has all this storage up there. So if the second floor gets finished, it's not just for the fire department. But I can do that, I mean.
That's good, yeah.
You know what I mean? We, they, they've been doing shifts there already, so nothing's really changed, but not a problem. I, like I said, I'll get ahold of Deputy King, we'll get you the numbers, three different proposals with his numbers, because he's the one that does the numbers. I can give you ballpark, but I don't wanna stand up here and give you ballpark, rather give you numbers that you can understand and.
And you hit that nail on the head, chief, because what's gonna happen is, we'll be at a deliberative or something like that and somebody's gonna put their hand up and say, where did you get these numbers? And we wanna be able to say, oh, well, we, you know.
Not a problem, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's worth noting that we do have currently in place an ambulance service revolving fund.
Yeah.
Currently, when they do transports and they get third-party payments, that's the fund that goes into. So we wouldn't be establishing a new one, we'd be just utilizing this on an expanded version.
Right, right.
But we, but I think that would be for the revenue, right?
Yes.
So whatever we have as a warrant article to establish that thing, that would be different because that was a limited, the limited language in there is for, you know, we could capture, you're saying we could capture the revenue in there, but we couldn't ask the voters to put this money we're talking about in that fund because the language is limited, so.
Correct.
We couldn't do like wages and equipment and all that, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Your presentation or the chief, Deputy Kane's presentation needs to be in the form of what's known as a gross budget.
Yeah.
Every single nickel is gonna take to do that. You can say, oh, by the way, we're gonna have revenue coming in over here.
But we can't use.
And it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, but we don't wanna lower this number by a hundred thousand. Because the revenue's tracked differently.
Right.
There's a brick wall between revenue and expenditures, so it's, it's necessary to take this action, I believe. And you can make the voters aware, oh, by the way, we're gonna have revenue, but we just don't know what that amount is, we have no history to go on either. I mean, what's in there now have been hit or miss, fair enough? Hit or miss revenues? Hit or miss revenues when it comes to this? The ambulance revolving fund?
Right.
If you.
This is the past year, yes, after budget's done, I have to come in front of the board in our public to discuss a few things in revenue. But we've usually, we've done pretty good in setting debt collections.
Right, so.
But couldn't, and I know we can't put this in the article because it won't be factual, right, but can't we come up with an estimate based on taking a look at what Trinity or any other mutual aid that we've got that did transport and back into that number to give us a ballpark figure as to how much revenue we could expect to offset cost?
But you can't put that in the warrant.
You can't, but I'm saying for a discussion.
Marketing.
Marketing.
For marketing, absolutely.
But for us to understand the impact.
Absolutely, but if it's, if it's gonna cost us seven hundred thousand dollars and we're gonna get two hundred thousand dollars back, we can't warrant for five hundred thousand dollars.
No, 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 I'm not asking for that.
Okay.
I'm looking to make sure I understand the impact of the dollars and how quickly the ROI hits it.
Sure.
That's all.
I get it.
Yeah, because, because when you market this to the voters, you wanna be able to say, hey.
And by the way.
And that's gonna help us in a year.
Right, it might be three years down the line, but it's three years and then that should help overall taxes for the town.
I know it's short in the window, I honestly don't think it's gonna make it. Because there's a couple of different things. One, we can get a price from a private ambulance company, which we did, I believe I said Trinity came in at seven hundred to nine hundred thousand, just to take care of Newton, one truck. I can reach out to a couple of privates, see what they would do, basically give a quote, go off the RFP that was sent out. And the other variable that nobody knows is that one-year contractors with five communities. I know when I was, the last meeting I was before I got sick, there was some of those communities that talked about signing this contract for one year, then they were out. So we also gotta keep that in consideration that I, I understand the contract is, you know, year to year, but if one of the other towns leave, what the cost is gonna be.
Understood.
Nobody has any of that idea.
Yeah.
On it. I mean, we can, I'm sure Trinity can give us a ballpark. Hypothetically, if Hampstead drops, what's the annual cost? You know, if Danville drops, Sandown, Atkinson, et cetera, what the annual cost will be? Okay, I, I can work on that if the board wants me to do that, I'll reach out to Trinity tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I, I think there's kind of two actions. One is, we need the number, the budget number for the warrant article, that's the priority. The second action would be, when it comes time to market this to the voters, and you know, we've had to do that with, you know, vote yes on five and all that stuff, we need all that information for that, saying, hey, and, you know, we're, kind of, we've talked about it before, but this is about having first call, I guess you'd say, right? Am I using the wrong terminology? But this would be about having our own ambulances that aren't gonna be going to Atkinson to take a call, they're gonna be in Newton. That's part of the marketing thing to people.
Correct, we have a mutual aid agreement, they come to us, we go to them.
But, yeah.
It's also EMS and fire.
Yeah.
So you're actually, the, if it happens, the crew's not only gonna do EMS, they're also gonna do the fireside.
Yeah.
So they're gonna do both, but I'll, I'll work on getting those numbers for the board, at least for deliberative session, and I just sent a text to the deputy to get a hard number to the board for staffing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the warrant article will not be a question asking if you want us to do it. You're just saying, if we do it, we're gonna need this amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, it's to, to raise and appropriate, you know, whatever it is, four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to establish, you know?
Yep.
And by, and by the way, we shouldn't be taking it out of the, as we're doing all the other warrant articles, having zero tax.
Oh, no, that one's definitely.
This one is going to be a tax.
Correct, yeah. No, no, I agree, and, and I think, again, from the marketing side, not the budgeting side, we need to explain to them what the risks are, what the risks are, should we not, and in towns decide not to re-up in a year, that that's additional cost to us that we're trying to avoid down the road, taking on that, so.
So that's, that's in the contract, it, it says, it does say what happens if they leave.
Yeah.
It's outlined in the contract, so, yeah, so we can just figure it out.
Pull it all together, I don't remember that piece of it, but.
Yeah, it was in there, it was deep in there, but it was in there.
Oh, I'm sure it was deep.
Okay.
But the town should understand the impact, should they say, no, I don't wanna go forward with this, okay, we'll take, understand the risk we're taking on, should towns back out.
And that's part of the marketing, not of the warrant.
Yeah, marketing, right.
Right. You believe you'll have sufficient time to market this with, when you get the numbers?
I.
I'm, I'm good at PowerPoint, I'll get stuff out.
I, I believe so because we do it every year. You know, the, the, we always have a tight deadline that's established by the, the RSAs, right? It's just, we need to, we need to have the voter's guide for all of these, but we should also have a little extra pamphlet. And it, it wouldn't be a bad idea to see an ambulance parked at the transfer station a couple of times, you know? I don't know. It's all about getting the volunteers to do that, though, so. Vote for me, yeah.
I'll volunteer to bring it over there, do I get to use all the bells, whistles and all that? Let's go.
Thank you.
All right, we're good with the warrant articles?
For now.
For now, all right, we'll move on to the budget.
The easier one. I say that facetiously.
Would you like to go department by department?
Yeah, why don't we do that, we can go through that quickly.
All right, this, mostly alphabetical, so the first one is assessing, and the default budget was forty-five thousand twenty dollars, and next year, they're asking for thirty thousand twenty dollars. The difference is data verification, and the amount of fifteen thousand dollars was not included in next year's proposed budget, primarily because we haven't expended anything Next is building safety, and that's code enforcement. The default budget was twenty-one thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars. The proposed twenty-four budget is twenty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. The difference equating to about the amount of money the part-time clerk has, there were hours that were added and, and the hourly rate went up. So you can see that's a delta of about six thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars. The cable committee is sixty-two hundred, that's flat from the default last year to the proposed of six thousand two hundred dollars. Cemetery budget is also flat, it's thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in the default, and the proposed is thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Oh, yeah, you're right, thank you, Diane.
Yeah.
Three thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-three, and the request is for three thousand dollars as well. Conservation Commission, their default budget was three thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars. They are asking for one hundred less, three thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars in the proposed budget. The difference being. Training?
No, the dues went down.
The dues went down, okay, thank you, Trish. The next budget category is elections, registrations, and vital stats. The default budget is one hundred thousand four dollars, six hundred eighty-nine, one hundred thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars, excuse me. And the ask in the twenty-twenty-four proposed is one hundred eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars. The difference is primarily driven by the deputy town clerk's proposed salary. Next is emergency management. The twenty-twenty-three default is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, and the proposed budget is thirty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. And that's primarily driven by the request for a twenty-three thousand dollar increase in the salary line, Trish?
Yes.
Um, the executive last year's budget was one hundred seventy-six dollars, five hundred, one hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. And the ask for, the proposal in the twenty-four is one hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars. And that increase is driven primarily by salaries. The next is the tax collector budget. The default for twenty-twenty-three is twenty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, and the request for twenty-twenty-four is thirty-four thousand three hundred dollars. The increase is primarily driven by salaries. And financial administration, last year was, default was $113,000.
Just to reiterate real quick on that with the tax collector, and even though we have the warrant to change, and if that passes, as, excuse me, Mary Jo said, the revenues that come in will kind of be offsetting that, because that'll come in towards the town also.
Yes.
So that'll help to offset that budget, because that'll be coming into the town, into the town's coffers.
Correct. Financial administration, 2023 default is $113,142. The request in the proposed is $141,265. And that is primarily driven by salaries. Next is the fire department. You might note, too, that, I'm reading off the wrong sheet, that the fire department has a new line called Trinity, and it has $109,000 in it. That's a prorated amount from the 130 that we're going to be asked to pay in the 12-month contract, but it's only got 10 months in the year of 2024. So the 130 was divided by 12, multiplied by 10.
Yeah.
And we came up with our number. Bear with me, folks. So the default budget in the fire department last year was $418,550. The request in 2024 is $551,703. Again, that's Trinity at 100,000. And the other increase is driven primarily by salaries. Forest fires, three-line budget totaling $4,750. The request is, been knocked down in 2024 to $1,901. The library's default budget was $139,185. The request for 2024 is $147,195, driven primarily by wages and?
Bookkeeping.
That's correct. They are, they are hiring a bookkeeper.
Yep.
Contracted bookkeeper, correct. The next budget you're looking at is highways and streets.
Government buildings.
Did I miss it? Oh, you're right, general government buildings. Thank you again, Diane. The 2023 default budget was $220,366. The next 2024 request is $220,163, primarily driven by the savings we got from electricity, although it's up, and propane and oil, because of the rates that we got partnering up with the school.
Bless you.
The next one is health officer supplies. $200 in 2023, $200 in 2024. Year-to-date expenditures are $141.24 in the office supply area. And now we're to highways and streets. The 2023 default total was $405,931. The request for 2024 is $698,435. That is for, basically, the maintenance, sand and salt's going up, but we're, we're buying with 2023's dollars, right?
Right.
2022's, actually. This budget also includes a $145,000 increase for another employee, for the highway department, so that we don't have one employee out on the road mending portholes with no one to watch their back. And it also includes a contemplation of an increase for the current employee's wages, because you certainly don't want to bring in somebody brand-new and pay them more than the existing foreman is right now. So that's part of the consideration as well. Next, our insurances. Last year's budget was $85,027. And the request for the proposed is $112,857. And that is going to change. If you look at the year-to-date expended, you could see it's $14,364, but we only budgeted $7,170. That was a double entry that occurred at the beginning of last year, so it will be more in line with a lower number. Next is personnel administration. That's our insurances. New Hampshire State Retirement for the PD, short-term disability. Last year's budget, 2023, was $514,406. And the proposed budget is $524,123. And those increases were all directly from our providers. Next budget is pest control.
Did we do legal? Did you do the legal?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yeah, legal's budget last year was $50,000, and we've lowered it to $38,500. There's not been a need to consult with legal as much as there has been in the past.
Strange.
Thank you.
Still good, though.
Next category is pest control. The 2023 default was $38,250. And the proposed is $31,000 even. That's based on current spending patterns that you can see. Next budget is the planning board. The 2023 default budget was $49,125. The proposed 24 budget is $50,250. And that's primarily driven by administration salaries, an increase of $9,700. Next is the police department. This year's 2023 default is $925,873. The request for 2024 is $928,922. And again, that's driven by primarily wage adjustments for both sworn and unworn personnel in the department. The next budget is the recreation commission. Last year's budget was $49,570. And the request this year, 2024, is $50,100. There's really not much of a, much, much change, although we didn't have life guides this year, so we know that all of that money that came from the warrant, after the voter said yes, it was placed in this budget. So it kind of gives an unrealistic, not an accurate picture, of what's been transpiring in the rec department. The next budget is solid waste. The 2023 default budget was $437,136. The request in 2024 is $483,301. What's driving this are the hauling costs, our disposal fees, and wages. Street lighting for 2023 was $20,500. We've had no expenditures charged to that so far this year. I have to follow up, I'll follow up with Peyton before the lights get turned off. The request was lower to $20,000, so about 600 less. Next is welfare administration. 2023 default budget was $25,876. And the proposed 2024 budget is $53,076, driven primarily by the inclusion of the social services that you see in the Warren article.
Right.
Warren article is kind of a stopgap measure, that if the budget fails, we still can provide those services if they say yes to the Warren article. Last but not least, the zoning board of adjustment. The 23 default budget was $9,446. And the 24 request is $10,540. The primary driver of that increase was related to wages. We currently have three notes out, bonds, notes, loans. One is for the fire station, as you know, we're still paying on that. The other is for a rescue pump lease. And the third one is the SCBA lease that we have for the self-contained breathing apparatus that the fire department uses. We lease those items. I don't think any of the language at the bottom of this page is entirely accurate. We're still working on that. So I don't think that I would, I would basically go public with any of the percentages that I see, because they're really not going to be accurate until we straighten that out. Total operating default budget for 2023 was $3,927,433. The request for the proposed in 2024 is $4,537,317. It's up about $580,000, $580,000 over the previous default. Again, employees haven't had wages, and we're contemplating, again, the new person in the highway department. So these are all readily identifiable increases that can be readily explained.
Good evening, board. While you're looking at the total budget this year, I would like to, and Jim and I have had a brief conversation about this, a contingency line item for storm-related incidences, which we have every year. You can't predict how many there are or how severe they're going to be. But I can tell you, I did an overview of the past five years, and we average five a year. Different things. This year, we had six. Weather, wind, we just went through one week and a half ago. On the highway side, it usually eats up about 10% of my operating budget, which is a pretty significant whack. PD suffers from it. Fire suffers from it. EOC suffers from it. I'm not looking to put it in any specific budget, just some type of a contingency dollar amount that can be absorbed on this. Back 10 or 12 years ago, FEMA, because we had hurricanes and tornadoes through here, and we hit the, and Trish and I went through it too, too many times. We're going through it now. We have a meeting, conference call Friday, to see if we can get money from FEMA to cover the July storm. We've had pretty good success doing that. The problem with it is, if that money comes in next year, it can't come back into my account.
Right.
Which is, for the town, is fine, because you're being reimbursed in the big picture. But my account doesn't get reimbursed that year. So I fall in a deficit of 10% of operating dollars that I can't absorb anywhere. If we have a contingency fund, then that would absorb that, not take it out of all of our operating funds. And then when the FEMA money came in, it would go back in the general fund. It's just a little bit neater way of offsetting the cost.
Well, that's that warrant that we talked about, right?
We have a Warren article, Mike, that's for $40,000 for just that. It's a contingency townwide.
Mike came in late to class.
Yeah.
You must have added that since our last meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. It's what happens when you come late to the class, yeah.
Exactly.
So I'll go back in the corner with the dunce cap now, okay?
We did take your suggestion that you had brought up, which you're reiterating about, so everybody knows about it.
I feel so much better now?
We put it in a warrant.
A little silly that I'm bringing it up now, but I feel so much better.
You know what? Better to be safe than sorry.
That's right. All right. Thank you, guys.
Why, do you want to see it?
Was it Gilda Radner? Never mind.
Yeah.
By the way, if I could just state, because I've been looking at these for a long time, I love the format with the, I've been looking for the minus sign for the longest time on these things, so we can easily, and, you know, people will be able to look at these on their own. You can see it right there. You can see which departments have a differential going that way and where the increases are. So as you said about five minutes ago, Jim, it's very clear where the differences are, you know?
And it's not like we're just throwing money and adding it into the budget. We are actually, when we sit here, we go through the budgets. Jim was here this whole weekend, going through the budgets and looking at them also, so that we go line by line to see where we're spending, and we're not trying to assess the taxpayers and have them continually feed into these different funds, and then the money goes into that unassigned fund balance. We're trying to keep that tax ratio within reason, so that we have the money we need to be able to take care of the town and conduct business the way it should be done, and not be overburdening the taxpayers with money that's going to, like I said, get just dumped into the unassigned balance, so that everything stays more in line the way that it should be.
Just two quick things. One, the forestry, I'll touch base with Jim, I think, is off. I think it was decreased, and it wasn't supposed to be decreased. And the other question from the EMS coordinator, Deputy Kane, how soon do you need that information? Unfortunately, he's not, that's what I told him, and I was told I'm unavailable for the rest of the week.
So, so do.
He's got a legitimate reason. We're on mic, I'm not going to bring it up.
No, I get it.
Let's be clear, right? Because we have an established deadline, right? So we need to go to press. On what date, Jim?
Typically, we'd not go to press until after the deliberative session.
Which is the 3rd of February?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
But here's the thing.
It has to be done before then.
We have, we have a public hearing, which is on the 15th.
Yeah.
So if you're looking at the 15th, we have a hearing on the Warren articles and the budget on the 15th in this room on Monday. So we need to have a clear picture before then, so we can all review it, so we can present it as what we're going with on the 15th. And then, as you know, chief, as people can, can mark that up and change it all around in the deliberative.
Okay.
And then we go to press, so.
Okay, so.
Those are the real timelines.
All right, next week.
I think so.
Deadline. Okay. Thank you.
So, I mean, the theme, you know, broken record again, is we're going up, but we're not a unique organization across the world. We're going up in terms of salary. We're going up in terms of insurance. We're going up in terms of the stuff that you pay for, like fuel and gas and, you know, materials. So, and I would, and I think, I think Bob said it too, again, as the veteran, I've seen more, like, microscopes on this budget than I've seen in a long time. You know, a lot of people, new sets of eyes up here, right? There are a few people here who have never been involved in this process, who dove down into it. We have other people down in the office that did so. And it's, it's a realistic budget. May not be realistic on individual people's checkbooks, but it's realistic in terms of what stuff costs.
It's very transparent.
Yep.
And in terms of wage adjustments, you have on your shared drive a document that Trish put together for me, which is a breakdown, a detailed breakdown, of how each department arrived at their particular number. Again, that's reading for, at your leisure, before you make a final decision. But that was the supporting information that you had requested. And that's it. We'll do it again.
And, and I'll kind of update on something I. And, and I'll, I'll kind of update on something I, I said before, I'll bring it up again, is every time we go through this, I'm looking around the room and I'm seeing the same faces. Not that I don't like your faces, but it's the same faces and it's, everybody has a stake in this that's in the room right now. So they're a department head or in the department or whatever. We're not seeing anybody from the community. I don't, I see a few people on, on Zoom, which is good, but like I said before, if you want to vote with your checkbook, no one can blame you for doing that, right? When, when you vote, you're like, oh, it's an increase, I don't want to vote for that. My thing is, if you're somebody in town with a platform who wants to talk to people to transfer station or go on social media and tell people that this budget is inflated or that something's wrong here and you want to influence a bunch of people to not vote for this budget, I said this, you know, three months ago, I challenge you to come in and be part of this process. You know, come on down, there are plenty of good seats available, you know? If you can't make the meeting and you're watching this via YouTube, then you can come into the town hall and you can get copies, the same copies we look at. It's not like top secret information.
No, and again, as we went through it, Jim sat there and said, due to the budget increase per each department that we went through, most of them were salary driven and we've talked to, we're blue in the face about trying to hire qualified people to do important jobs for this town, to keep this town relevant, to keep it safe and to keep it moving forward. And we're in competition with all these other towns and you can, I mean, theirs is transparent too. You can go online and you can look up their stuff and see what they're spending and what they're paying and you would be able to see what their budgets look like if you just use towns that are comparable to our population and you won't see, I'm telling you, a difference to what they're looking at paying and what we're paying. As, as Matt said, we've, we as the board, the town administrator, our town, our town department heads have gone through their budgets, they've looked at what they've been spending, what they haven't been spending, they've trimmed down the numbers where they can, they, they brought up the numbers where they had to in certain line items so that we have a more truer
Picture.
point blank money line to where we have to be, like we said, so that you don't end up seeing next year that there's going to be an extravagant deposit in that unassigned fund balance like you, you've seen in the past. So it is what it is and the, the other point is that the town, you keep hearing us saying that we've had to purchase this piece of equipment and do all this. The town hasn't been doing that for quite some time because we've been running on default budgets. Money's been pulled back that the department heads were, were told they couldn't spend and, you know, and I've used the term, what is it, Robin?
Robin Peter.
Peter to Pay Paul and, and that's what we've been up against. And unfortunately, the, the perfect storm with COVID and everything that's hit all at once, that's, that's where we're at and that's, and that's what we're up against. All right. So we're looking for approvals. Joe, I believe this is you.
Oh, yeah, of course. Okay, Veterans Tax Credit 6-7-3. I move to approve the application for Veterans Tax Credit for Tax Map 6-7-3, beginning tax year 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Dan for discussion. This piece of property, I believe, and I'm not sure that we might have an issue with this property about something in town, and I wanted to talk about this to where, as far as code enforcement goes, if this is the same property that I'm thinking about that I don't want to, we can't fully disclose, but if we have an issue with it, is, are we able to not grant this in lieu of them being in failure of code enforcement?
I'm afraid I don't think you could do that.
Okay, well.
I mean, we can't use that as a reason.
Correct.
Right.
Board can still vote no to deny this tax credit because it's up to the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
To grant or deny.
Yep. They've made application and it's your call.
Exactly, but, and, and based on the application, I'm fine with approving it.
And I think the risk lies in, in the, you know, this is a state statute as to who is eligible.
Right.
So for us to vote no, we'd have to have some concern about their eligibility, not that the property is.
Right.
All right, I just wanted to check on that.
Worth the question.
So with, with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous? Go ahead, Joe.
Well, the next one, Bob, is a meeting schedule.
Yeah, you have in your package, the meeting schedule for 2024 that Robin was kind enough to put together. I don't know if it needs formal approval, but if anybody sees a date that's too close to a particular holiday, we can move that. We don't have to do it now, but we could-
Yeah, we can just do it when the time comes.
I, I would suggest, starting in April, the board should probably meet every week. That's-
Right after the election, right?
Starting after.
Wow, that's, that's interesting. Are you going to be in the audience?
Definitely not.
So everybody's in favor of the schedule?
Thank Robin.
Don't see any issues.
All right. Go ahead, Joe.
Manifests. I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $2,586.20 from the emergency management checking account to pay an invoice to CNM Auto Repair in the amount of $2,200, $2,000, I believe it's, it's probably a misspell, a misprint over here, but it's $2,261.20?
Hold on a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of
$1 million.
One, okay, $1,43,000, $1,43,411.04 with a pay date of December 2nd, 2023. Payment to include $1,030,695 to the Sandburn Regional School District and $5,468.13 to Card Member Services.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $42,939.95 with a pay date of January 2nd, 2024. Payment to include $21,605.96 to Municipal Resources, Inc. and $3,036.28 to Palmer Gas and Oil for Fuel Services.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $11,810 from the Highway Construction Checking Account to pay an invoice to Eastern Seaboard Concrete Construction Company with the pay date of January 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $718 from the Cable Revolving Fund to pay an invoice to Hewlett Packet Financial Services Company in the amount of $478.52 and $240.02 totaling $718.60 with a pay date of January 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $65,981.49 for pay period December 17th through the 30th with the pay date of January 4th, 2024. The manifest includes $149.90 in opera administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
I move to approve and accept the non-public minute, minute, meeting, meeting, whoa, that's a tongue twister. Let me start over again. I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated December 19th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor? Aye. Action items. Joe, you want to talk about Christmas tree?
To the best of my knowledge, the, and I haven't checked today because I haven't been down there, but the, the can was supposed to be brought over by Tareks for the trees removal, disposal, and I understand that they've set aside a section down there to have that done, so.
And they'll be collected till, what is it, the 13th?
They'll be, I think it's the, the 13th or 14th, I can't remember what date.
Of this month? So they'll put them to good use to try out their equipment and then they use the, when they shred them, they use that to burn?
They fuel their, their, whatever, their furnaces or whatever with it.
Right. So it, it all goes and gets recycled and put to good use.
Right.
Any updates on the 275?
We haven't, we haven't met in a couple of weeks. Our next meeting's next week. We're still looking for volunteers, so anyone who wants to volunteer, come forward.
Very good. Anybody else?
Just advanced planning, kind of advanced planning. January 23rd is the New Hampshire presidential election.
Right.
So polls will be open eight to eight at 8 Merrimack Road, so we need to make sure we have at least three board members at all times or a pro tem so the polls can stay open. So we don't have to discuss it now, but I, I do, I can be there about 7:30 in the morning and I have to leave because I have a class I have to teach. I, I have to leave about five-ish, so I'm, I'll definitely be there for that time, but we need to make sure we have board members there later. And I, I, I haven't talked to Mary Jo about this, but I, I really cringe when I think of what's going to happen after the polls close. And what I'm saying is, and I'll try not to be too political when I say this, there is a high-level government official who will not be on the ballot and on his behalf, there is a major movement to have a write-in of his name on the ballot. So there could be-
Long hours.
Long hours afterwards, so, and again, I'll try not, I probably should be standing there, Joe, I should probably do what you do, but I'll tell people. Me personally, if anybody is expecting me to write in somebody's name on a ballot that didn't put their own name on the ballot in this case, I'm going to reconsider writing their name in. Just think that for every, every write-in vote has to be hand-counted and we're going to have volunteers when the polls close at 8 o'clock. The night does not end for those volunteers. They are going to be going late into the night, never mind the metrics we have to submit to the state. We have to submit to the state, how many people undeclared asked for this party or that party? How many people, when they left, didn't undeclare?
The, the bigger part to that, Matt, too, is the fact that it's not like it was a clerical error. This was done on that person's own behalf and-
Knowingly.
Yeah, knowingly, out of, I don't, I want to be nice and, and not say it, but-
Okay, so the point I was trying to make, fair enough. Fair enough, Diane. The point I was trying to make is they're going to be long hours that night and I'm kind of glad I'm teaching a class, so I can't come back. But we're just going to have to make sure we have plenty of volunteers. Many hands make light work.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say one thing. I've been, I've been through a couple of them and, and Matt is exactly right. It doesn't stop at, at 8 o'clock. It usually ends about 12 midnight in terms of moving stuff around, so I'd like to see, you know, some of our elected officials there as well to help out because in the past, it's been very, it's less than a handful of people have helped.
Yeah.
Yes, that's part of it.
And, and I'll also add too, if you're reading the union leader a few weeks ago, they, they had an article about how it's very hard to find volunteers. Mary Jo was here, whatever that was, a couple of months ago. I believe we increased her salary that she can pay
Yeah.
the volunteers. So any volunteers are welcome if you want to get involved. Contact the town clerk. I'll give you her home phone number. Contact the town clerk's office because she probably needs more volunteers, so.
Anybody else? I need a motion to go into non-public for hiring?
I don't have the RSA.
Yeah, RSA, I would move to go into a non-public session under RSA 91AD hiring?
C.
B hiring. What he said.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Matt made the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.